This time I'd like to call this meeting to order.
Roll call, Mayor Rankin, he's late, he will be in.
Here.
Vice Mayor Smith. Tom Selaya.
Here.
Councilmember Hawkins.
Here.
Councilmember Montano.
Here.
Councilmember Walter.
Here.
Valerie Woolridge.
She's right behind you. At this time, I'd like to take a motion to adjourn to executive session.
I so move.
First and second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved, we're going to executive session.
Mayor, at this time, can we ask the council to recess from executive session since we'll be going back into executive session after the meeting?
I need a motion to recess from the executive session.
I make a motion to adjourn from executive session. Second?
No, sir.
To recess.
Recession, excuse me.
We have a motion to second to recess from the executive session that we will continue on after the regular council meeting, any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the question, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Would you leave us an invocation? We're gonna have the invocation, if everybody please rise and remain standing for the pleasure of allegiance.
You bow your head as I pray. Dear wise and loving Father, please let me say thank you on behalf of all who are gathered here today. Thank you for your many and abundant blessings, thank you for life itself and the measure of the health we need to fulfill our calling. Thank you for the ability to be involved in useful work and the honor of bearing the appropriate responsibilities. This evening, I pray for the wisdom to govern amid the conflicting interest and issues of our time, a sense of the welfare and true needs of our people, and confidence in what is good and fitting. In your most blessed name I pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic with which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with never been, ever, or wrong. Thank you. This will be the first call to the public for comment on issues within jurisdiction of the town council. Council rules limit public comment to three minutes. Individual council members may respond to criticism made by those commenting, may ask staff to review a matter raised, or may ask that a matter be put on a future agenda. However, members of the council shall not discuss or take action on any matter during an open call to the public unless the matters are properly noticed for discussion and legal action. Does any member of the audience have anything that they would like to question the council about or make any comments? Seeing no movement, I'll close call to the public. Need a motion to adjourn to Merrill Ranch Community Facility District Number One Board.
I make a motion to adjourn to Merrill Ranch Community Facility District Number One Board.
Second. We have a motion to second to adjourn to Merrill Ranch Community Facility District Number One Board. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the question, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Item 8A, public hearing to receive public comment on the Merrill Ranch Community Facility District Number One budget, and for discussion approval, disapproval of resolution number MRCFD-1, 127-14, a resolution of the Board of Directors of Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District Number One, Pinal County, Arizona, adopting the budget for fiscal year 2014-2015. Mr. Farina?
Good evening, board members. This is a public hearing and adoption of the resolution adopting the 2014-15 fiscal year annual budget for CFD Number One. The total proposed budget is $4,873,300, and includes about $3.6 million for pavement preservation on main arterials throughout Anthem, and to also reimburse developers for infrastructure improvements installed in various units throughout the CFD. The pavement preservation, you may recall, we spoke with you about that, issuing GO bonds to complete that totaling about 1 point, not to exceed 1.5 million, and then the remainder is to reimburse the developer of that total capital. There's also 1 point, or $1,252,400 in debt service payments, which is principal and interest payments towards the GO, outstanding GO bonds, and special assessment lien bonds, and then $47,800 towards operations, maintenance, and administration. I'd like to say that on the property tax side, which is the next item, there is no increase in this budget for property taxes, the rate remains the same.
Thank you. Any member of the council having a question, a mic? Hearing none at this time, I'll open the public hearing. Does any member of the audience have anything that they'd like to discuss on CFD One? Seeing no movement, I'll close call to the public. Need a motion?
Make a motion to adjourn from Merrill Ranch Community.
We need to vote on it, right? Is that correct?
I need a motion on the adoption.
Make a motion to approve resolution number MRCFD-1, 127-14.
Second. Tara, I'm sorry, but you understand where we're at?
I do, I was just reading it for clarification purposes, though it stated public hearing ordinance second reading, action item.
All right, yes, it's action.
On line.
We're talking about item 8A, it's marked action, public hearing resolution.
I apologize, my computer scrolled to 8B.
Okay.
So we do have a motion to approve resolution MRCFD-1, 127-14, and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the question, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Item B, public hearing to receive public comment on Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District Number One property tax levy, and second reading of ordinance number MRCFD-1, 111-14, an ordinance of Merrill Ranch Community Facility District Number One, Pinal County, Arizona, levying the assessed valuation of property within the community facilities district subject to the taxation of certain sums upon each $100, a valuation sufficient to raise the amount estimated to be received from funds for the community facilities expenses for fiscal years ending the 30th day of June 2015. First reading was held on June 16, 2014. Mr. Farina?
Board members, this is a public hearing and second reading of ordinance to levy the secondary property tax for the district. There is no change in the rate, as has been the case since the district was formed. The total levy is $3.55 per $100 of net assessed valuation, and with that, this is the same as what was presented previously.
Any member of the board have any questions, Mr. Farina? Hearing none, at this time, I will open the public hearing. Any member of the public have anything they'd like to say on the secondary property tax levy? Seeing no movement, I'll close the public hearing, this will be discussed again in two weeks, Lisa?
We will bring this back to you in two weeks, we're action.
Thank you.
Make a motion to adjourn from Merrill Ranch Community Facility District Number One Board.
Second. We have a motion and a second to adjourn from Merrill Ranch Community Facility District One Board. Any other discussion? Seeing none, I hear, call for the question, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries.
I'll make a motion to adjourn to Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District Number Two.
Second. We have a motion and a second to adjourn to Merrill Ranch Community Facility District Number Two Board. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we call for questions, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Item A, public hearing to receive public comment on Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District Number Two budget, and for discussion approval, disapproval of resolution number MRCFD-2, 227-14, a resolution of the Board of Directors of the Merrill Ranch Community Facility District Number Two, Pinal County, Arizona, adopting the budget for fiscal year 1415.
Board members, the total proposed budget for CFD Number Two is $1,752,000, and includes $566,100 to reimburse developer for infrastructure improvements installed in the various units throughout the CFD, $1.1 million in debt service, principal and interest payments towards outstanding GO bonds, and special assessment lien bonds, and then $47,800 for operations, maintenance, and administration. Again, there is no increase in the property taxes, they'll remain at $3.55 per $100 of net assessed valuation.
Any question for Mike? Hearing none, at this time, I'll open the public hearing for Community Facility Districts Number Two. Any member of the audience have any question? Seeing no movement, hearing no questions, I'll call, close the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution number MRCFD-2, 227-14, a resolution of Board of Directors of Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District Number Two, Pinal County, Arizona, adopting the budget for fiscal year 2014-2015.
Second. Lisa, do we need a roll call vote on this?
Not at this time, sir.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution MRCFD-2, and number 227-14. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the question, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Item B, public hearing to receive public comment on Merrill Ranch Community Facility District Number Two property levy, and second reading of ordinance number Merrill Ranch, MRCFD-2, 2010-14, an ordinance of Merrill Ranch Community Facility District Number Two, Pinal County, Arizona, levying the assessed valuation of the property tax within the community facilities district subject to the taxation of certain sums upon each $100, a valuation sufficient to raise the amount estimated to receive from the funds for community facilities expenses for fiscal year ending in the 30th day of June 2015. First reading was held on June 16, 2014.
Mike?
Again, board members, this is the second reading of the ordinance, adoption of the ordinance will be on July 21st, and again, I'll just repeat that there is no increase to the tax rate, it remains at $3.55 per $100 of net assessed valuation.
Any member of the board have any question, a mic? Hearing none, I'll open the public hearing. Any member of the public have any questions or concerns with Merrill Ranch Facility District Number Two? Seeing no movement, hearing no comment, I'll close the public hearing. Again, we'll be back on the 21st in two weeks on this.
Make a motion to adjourn from Merrill Ranch Community Facility District Board Number Two.
Second. We have a motion and a second to adjourn from Merrill Ranch Community Facility District Number Two Board. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the question, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Item 12, public hearings, 12A, public hearing to receive comments on property tax levy, and the second reading of ordinance number 612-14, an ordinance of the Town of Florence, Pinal County, Arizona, levying the assessed valuation of property within the Town of Florence, subject to taxation of a certain sum upon each $100, a valuation sufficient to raise the amount estimated to be received from funding from the general municipality expense for fiscal year ending the 30th day of June 2015. First reading was June 16, 2014. Mr. Farina?
Good evening, Mayor and Town Council, this is a public hearing and second reading of the ordinance to levy the property tax for the town. As I mentioned in the previous reading, there is no increase to the property tax rate. This current year, 2013-14, the rate is $1.1182 dollars per $100 of net assessed valuation, that rate is going to stay the same. There is some confusion, the way the truth and taxation hearing, the way we were required by state statute to post that notice, and hopefully this clears up any confusion as to did the rate increase or didn't it, did it not increase? Again, the rate, the current rate is 1.1182 in 2013-14, and it will remain that for 2014-15. The confusion may come from the notice of tax increase, where it says, for example, the proposed increase will cause Florence's primary property taxes on a $100,000 home to increase from $110.16 to $111.82, or $1.66. Now, that just, that, the way that reads comes about because of state statute, and the reason for that is, as you know, our rate is not $1.11016, but that rate is derived from the increased in net assessed valuation, and then backing into the rate for what it would be had we established our property tax levy, the total dollars, not the rate or the percentage, but our total dollars for the townwide, we, you back into the 1.11016. So although we're required to state this in the notice, that an increase would be $1.66 on a $100,000 home, that, in reality, that's not the case, because our rate is not changing. What changed was the total property tax levy, or the increase in the assessed valuation. I know it's kinda confusing, I had to reread it myself to help it make sense in my own mind, but again, I guess, point being, there is no increase in property tax rate.
Any member of the council have any question, a mic? I got one. On the district lever, on the general fund for Merrill Ranch Street Lighting Districts, why did we have an excess of revenue that we didn't have, that we don't have to charge anything this year?
Mayor and Council, the property tax levy was set, and perhaps Lisa or someone else can answer this question, because it goes back before I got here, however, the property taxes that were collected, just accumulated and accumulated, and they were outpacing the expenditures, causing an increase in the prop, in the total collections of property tax versus the expenditures. So as the last couple of budgets or years have gone by, there's just, an accumulation of property tax has been collected that can now be used to pay down, pay the expenditures as the years go by, and eventually, that excess fund balance will be down to zero, and then a new rate would need to be set.
How long do you think it's gonna be before our fund balance is down to zero?
I don't have an exact number of years, but looking at the fund balance versus the current year expenditures, it could take several years.
In other words, we were banking a whole bunch of money and still charging the people in tax?
In the past, correct.
Any other question? Hearing none, at this time, I'll open the truth and taxation public hearing. Does any member of the public have anything they'd like to question us about? Seeing no action, I'll close the truth and taxation public hearing. Again, this will be brought up to us in two weeks.
Item B, public hearing to receive citizen comments on increasing water and wastewater utility rates and fees, and discussion approval, disapproval of resolution number 1452-14, a resolution of the Town of Florence, Pinal County, Arizona, providing increases in rates and fees for water and wastewater services effective September 1, 2014. Mr. Farina?
Mayor and Council, again, in accordance with state statute requirements, on June 2nd, Town Council adopted a notice of intention to increase water and wastewater rates and fees, and also set tonight as a public hearing for these increases. By way of background, the town engaged Economist.com back in 2009 to perform a rate study that would ensure that all costs to provide utility services would be covered by rates and fees charged by the utility. For the past several years, the town has increased the utility rates in accordance with the study's recommendations. The 2009 study determined rates that would enable the town to recover the costs of providing the utility services, and then that study was looked at again in 2011, which confirmed that the rates that were then in place for 2009 were continued, continue to be adequate for 2011 through the year 2016-17.
Any member of the council have any question, a mic? Hearing none, I'm gonna open the public hearing to the citizen comments on our water wastewater rate. Seeing no movement, I'll close, I'll close the public hearing. This one we need a motion on, right?
Correct.
Like to call for a roll call vote.
Yes, sir.
We need a motion? Make a motion to approve resolution number 1452-14.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to approve resolution 1452-14. If I understand this right, this is from Economist.com, is where the, the rate study that we're looking at comes from. And this was set in 20, and what year did we do this study?
The first study was done in 2009, and then was looked at again in 2011, confirming the raise from 2009, and in the study, it had recommended rates and rate increases for the utility through 2016-17.
Even though I don't like it, I don't like to raise any rates or anything, I don't see any way around it. Okay, roll call, a vote, please.
Councilmember Selaya?
Aye.
Councilmember Woolridge?
Aye.
Councilmember Walter?
Aye.
Councilmember Montano?
Nay.
Councilmember Hawkins?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Smith?
Nay.
Mayor Rankin?
Aye.
Motion has carried.
Thank you.
Make a motion to adjourn to a special meeting.
Second. We have a motion and a second to adjourn to a special meeting, and this will be on discussion approval of our budget, correct?
Correct.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the question, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Mayor, this is the item that needs the roll call vote.
This is the, this is the, the public hearing to?
The public hearing, correct.
Do you wanna go ahead and read it?
Yes. Item A, public hearing to receive citizen comments on fiscal year 2014-15 budget, and discussion approval, disapproval of resolution number 1450-14, a resolution of the Town of Florence, Pinal County, Arizona, adopting a budget for fiscal year 2014 and 15. Mr. Farina?
Mayor and Council, the town has discussed, has been presented the budget over several study sessions, and also adopted the tentative budget on June 16th. So the proposed budget has not changed from the tentative budget that was our, was adopted, and with that, the total budget is $66,806,000, which includes $38.7 million for capital outlay or capital projects, $2.5 million set aside for grants, $2 million contingency, and then also, $10.5 million of that is included as carryovers from the prior year.
Any member of the council have any question, a mic? Now, we need, this is gonna be, I'm gonna open this, a public hearing on this. Does any member of the council have any, or the public have anything they'd like to discuss about our budget for next fiscal year? Hearing no comments, seeing no movement, I'll close the public hearing. Need a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve resolution number 1450-14.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution number 1450-14. Any other discussion? And this will be a roll call vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, roll call.
Roll call.
Roll call?
Yeah.
Councilmember Selaya?
Aye.
Councilmember Woolridge?
Aye.
Councilmember Walter?
Aye.
Councilmember Montano?
Aye.
Councilmember Hawkins?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Rankin?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Make a motion to adjourn from special meeting?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn from the special meeting, any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the question, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Item 15, consent agenda. All items indicated by an asterisk will be handled as a single vote as part of the consent agenda unless a council member or member of the public objects at the time the item is called. Item A, resolution number 1451-14, a resolution of the Town of Florence, Pinal County, accepting terms and conditions of an intergovernmental agreement between Pinal County and the Town of Florence for roadway improvements, construction, and maintenance of Cooper Road, Christian Road, and Old Florence Calvin Highway, authorizing the execution by the town manager. Item B, authorization of acceptance of grant funds awarded to the high intensity traffic area, trafficking area. Item C, approval of applying for a grant in the amount of $125,000 in the U.S. Department of Justice Community Oriented Policing Services program to be used to add crime protection school resources, police officer position. Item D, approval of accepting the registered demands ending May 31, 2014, in the amount of $3,126,867.86. Approval of the May 5th, May 14th, May 19th, June 2nd, June 16th Town Council minutes. Receive and file the following board and commission minutes, the March 20, 2014 Planning and Zoning Commission Minutes. Item G, Johnson Utilities ratification of the following expenditures made while conducting due diligence in consideration of the Johnson Utilities acquisition. One, ratification of work completed by Waterworks Engineering LLC in the amount not to exceed Item Two, ratification of work completed by Economist.com LLC in amount not to exceed Item Three, ratification of work completed by Greenberg Troish LLC in the amount not to exceed $53,604.57. Ratification of work completed by Henry &amp; Horn PLC in the amount not to exceed $21,664. Ratification of work completed by Dickerson, go to the item for me. Ratification of work completed by Dickerson's Ride PLLC in the amount not to exceed $20,819.66. Ratification of work completed by Sims Murray LTD in the amount not to exceed $7,306.80. There is one correction, and let me point out that correction, please. Hold on just one second. Greenberg, the amount for Greenberg and Troish is not, as the agenda states, $53,604.57, that is a typographical error, the amount is $28,015.55. The minutes will correct, will reflect the proper amount, apologize for that. That is your consent agenda as presented.
Any member of the council have anything they'd like to pull off the consent agenda? I'd like.
Number G.
Which one?
G six.
You want, okay, we'll have the G, and then we'll go to item six on it. I'd also like item A pulled off.
Okay.
Any other member of the council have anything? Hearing none, I need a motion? Make a motion to approve the consent agenda as written with the removal of item 15A and 15G.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda with the exception of items 15A and 15G. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the question, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Item A, resolution number 1451-14, Mr. Coster?
Wayne, I just got a couple of questions I need to ask you on this. I, I know on Cooper Road, there were some problems with the right-of-way, have those all been cleared up between the town and the county and the citizens that have the roads on their property?
Mayor Rankin, Town Council, yes, the right-of-way problems have been cleared up, as well as the drainage issues at the intersection of Magma and Cooper Road.
What about that wash? Are we just gonna go through the bottom of that, on Cooper Road north of the?
Yes, they'll be installing some drainage improvements at that wash, basically cut-off walls that would address the drainage from the east to the west.
And on Christianson Road, what are you doing out there?
Dickens, Christianson Road, I'm sorry. We already maintain about a half mile Christianson Road to, north of Palmer Road. We will be extending that maintenance three quarters of mile, miles south, and then interconnecting with an area of road that is not currently maintained, but that will be maintained by the Sandman's operations in the area.
And the Florence Calvin Highway, what are we doing there?
We're extending the, our maintenance on Old Florence Calvin Highway from just immediately west of Diflin, Diflin Road all the way to Florence Calvin Highway, distance of 1.9 If I could offer this, what we're doing is basically picking up about 2.6 miles of maintenance for the next five years, and trading off 30 times a year where we maintain Cooper Road, and we only have to maintain those other roads equivalent weighted ratio 15 times, so it's a factor of two to one.
On the Kelvin Road, we're taking it from Diflin Road all the way to 79?
That, no, to Florence, to Florence Calvin Highway, New Florence Calvin Highway. That, no, to Florence, uh, to Florence Calvin Highway, New Florence Calvin Highway. There's a, there's a map at the, uh...
Okay, so we're taking in the old Florence Calvin Highway that runs by the east unit?
That's correct. Old Florence Calvin Highway from the town limits all the way to basically New Florence Calvin Highway.
Right. And are we going to pave that?
I'm sorry?
Will that be chip sealed?
No, that will not be chip sealed. They maintain it about once, bi-monthly, once every two months, they maintain it. We'll continue that effort on Old Florence Calvin Highway, as well as Christianson Road.
And the reason we have to do that is because the bridge that we have over the small canal, there are fire trucks or the prison buses cannot use that, right?
Uh, yes, because that's specifically in the area of Diflin Road, an area that we have now.
So, if, if we were able to fix that canal bridge, the, on the Cas Grand Canal, that would probably eliminate some of this maintenance we'd have to do out there in the future?
Uh, yes, it would, because the, uh, the traffic would decrease, especially the wait-limit traffic. We're seeking funding for MAG at this time on that.
Okay. I know the Cooper Road was a very interesting project due to the fact that a lot of the roadway was on other people, on per, private property, and that's all been taken care of and cleared up.
Yes, sir.
Okay. I have no other further questions on item A, anybody else? Need a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve Item A, or 15A, um, Resolution Number 1451-14, IGA with Pinal County.
Second. We have a motion to second to adopt Resolution 1451-14. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the question, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Item 6G, Vice Mayor Smith?
Uh, ratification of work will be by Sims &amp; Murray Limited. Exactly what did Sims &amp; Murray do? Anybody?
Yes, thank you, Vice Mayor Smith, members of the council. Um, Bill Sims is, uh, an attorney in Phoenix that, uh, among other things, does some work for a couple of municipalities in the state, and he's also the legal advisor to the risk pool. Um, a decision was made to, um, have Mr. Sims, uh, get involved in certain aspects of the Corporation Commission proceedings pertaining to the acquisition of Johnson Utilities. And he and I worked together, um, to an extent in, um, preparing certain filings that had to be lodged with the Corporation Commission and the docket pertaining to the Johnson Utilities case.
Thank you.
Any other questions on this item? Hearing none, we need a, need a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve Agenda Item 15G, Johnson Utilities Acquisition Due Diligence.
Second. We have a motion to second to approve, uh, Item 15G.
Can, can I have the item? Okay, that's all right, perfect. Sorry.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, I need a motion, and that'll be a, under resolution, well, that's, not a resolution, just a matter of approving.
To ratify the expenditures made while conducting due diligence in consideration of the purchase of Johnson Utilities LLC in an amount not to exceed $182,308.
Thank you.
Second. We have a motion to second to approve the Johnson Utility ratification. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the question, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Item 16, Resolution Number 1453-14, Discussion Approval Disapproval of a Resolution of the Town of Florence, Pinal County, Arizona, approving the pre-annexation and development agreement with Palms Magic Lake 80 LLC and Arizona Limited Liability Company, and authorizing the execution of such pre-annexation development agreement, for annexation number 2013-1, Magic Ranch 80 Property. Mr. Eckhoff?
Mayor, Town Council, uh, we're continuing to present these pre-annexation and development agreements with you, all tied to the two proposed annexations that we've been working on for the past year, which you can see on this map here, the Magic Ranch Annexation and the Arizona Farms Annexation. Uh, we've brought several of these to you already. We have five on the agenda tonight. Probably on the 21st, we'll have another five pre-annexation and development agreements, and then the remaining four or so will be on the August 4th, um, agenda, uh, which is also the public hearing for the final, uh, for the annexation ordinances. The annexation development agreements that you have on the agenda tonight are all in the Magic Ranch area, and we've highlighted exactly where, where they're all falling tonight. The first one is referred to as the, as the Magic Ranch 80 Property, and then you'll see, all these are sitting right in the area of existing, uh, subdivision lots, either developed lots with homes on them, or improved vacant lots. These are all, all five of these areas are kind of nudged, nudged in this area around the existing Magic Ranch, Magic Ranch Development, and in fact, part of the Magic Ranch Master, Master Plan. Uh, what's unique about this particular one is that they, this is the site where we have the first fire station site dedication on. So, this site is intended, uh, as, as the need arises to have an additional fire station, police substation out in this area, uh, this will, this site will fulfill that need in the Magic Ranch area. And you'll see in coming agendas where there is also a fire station site proposed in the, within the Arizona Farms Annexation area. So, we're prepared for, for that growth to occur in those areas. All five of these agreements are pretty, are pretty similar. Uh, the main gist of them is, which, which you have seen on the past development agreements, is that the, the development impact fee, uh, is the existing, essentially the existing development impact fee that applies today, and that is preserved for them for a period of, of seven years, after which the development impact fee will be whatever the prevailing, uh, impact fee is at that time. Also, you'll see in, in, in all of these, since they have existing zoning entitlements, preliminary plat, or final plat, or engineering entitlements, we've worked closely with them in Pinal County to have those improvements transferred, transferred over to the Town of Florence. Uh, this will also supersede any pre-annexation development agreements that are out there with the county, and then also some, uh, the resolution agreements that were, were, were done on some of these properties, and then also supersede any agreements that maybe perhaps we don't know about today that may show up subsequently on some title, title search, because over those years, there were a lot of agreements that were, that were transpired when things were really busy out in that area. So, that about sums up the first one, and the next, and the next four are very similar. I'd be happy to address any questions.
Any member of the council have any question? Mark? And on all five of these, I would assume that we're, we're going to, you've worked out with the county where, I mean, fits county zoning to what they're zoned under right now, in compliance with the master development agreement for that area?
Mayor, Mayor Council, on, uh, in all the cases of the properties that are coming in, they'll receive comparable, comparable zoning. In some cases, the comparable zoning is going to be, going to be completely adequate to meet their needs on all these, on all these properties. Uh, there's a couple of properties where they're actually amending the zoning to improve upon the plan. This in, this in part is one of the projects that actually have a new, uh, they have an amended PUD on that will be coming forward to you, and they did that, uh, actually to reduce some of the lots in the project, add some open space, and to add the fire station site. So, they actually improved upon the comparable zoning that would, otherwise we would have had.
Thank you. Any other question? Hearing none, need a motion?
Make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 1453-14, entering into a pre-annexation and development agreement with Palms Magic Lake 80 LLC.
I'll second.
We have a motion to second to adopt Resolution 1453-14. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the question, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Item B, Resolution 1454-14, Discussion Approval Disapproval of a Resolution of the Town of Florence, Pinal County, Arizona, approving the pre-annexation and development agreement with SFD Magic Ranch LLC and Arizona Limited Liability Company, and authorizing execution of such pre-annexation development agreement, for annexation number 2013-01, Prodigy at Magic Ranch Properties. Mr. Eckhoff?
Mayor, Council, as I suggested before, very similar terms on this particular agreement. And just to zoom in and let you know exactly where this particular property is, you can see it highlighted, highlighted on the map there, and then there's an additional exhibit that you can see that this, their particular site, uh, falls east of, of existing development in Magic Ranch and west of the Copper Basin Railroad, and, um, they'll actually touch some additional properties in Magic Ranch and the Arizona Farms PUD, um, towards the, towards the north or north, northeast. And I'd be happy to address any questions you may have on this one.
Any member of the council have any question for me? Seeing none, I need a motion? Make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 1454-14.
Second.
We have a motion to second to adopt Resolution Number 1454-14. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the question, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Item C, Resolution 1458-14, Discussion Approval Disapproval of a Resolution of the Town of Florence, Pinal County, Arizona, approving the pre-annexation and development agreement with Gem Land Cattle LLC and Arizona Limited Liability Company, and Empire West Title Agency LLC and Arizona Limited Liability Company, and authorizing the execution of such pre-annexation development agreement, annexation number 2013-01, Villa Jet Magic Ranch Properties. Mr. Eckhoff?
Mayor, Council, this property sits immediately south of the last property that you just acted upon, and you can see it fitting, fitting in this corner of the, of the annexation area. The terms are similar, there is one thing that I'll highlight on, on this particular project, is that you can see from this exhibit that within that southwest corner of the property, there is a recorded final plat called the Villa Jet Magic Ranch Unit, Unit One. It's a recorded final plat, uh, but it is undeveloped. They have an insurance agreement with the, with the county that guarantees the completion of all, of all the improvements, and within this development agreement, there is a, an agreement that that assurance will be transferred over from Pinal County to the Town of Florence upon, upon annexation. So, then the town will have a guarantee that the improvements will be, will be completed. And we've worked that out with the county already, and that particular agreement will also be going to the Board of Supervisors for ratification, the County Board of Supervisors.
Any member of the council have any question, Mark? Mark, just one thing, are we still talking about the same thing on all these with the, uh, impact fees, the seven years, and then prevailing rate?
Mayor, Council, yes, yes. Um, all of these are very, very similar in that aspect, in that they're, they are, um, paying essentially what the impact fee is today for a, for a period of seven, seven years, and then the rate will be the prevailing, uh, rate. So, we've been pretty consistent on that particular component.
And going to this utility development impact fees, that's under the Johnson, uh, Utilities Company, is that correct?
Mayor, Council, yes. The, all, all these properties in Magic Ranch, actually in Arizona Farms as well, are, uh, currently served by the Johnson, Johnson Utilities. Um, so, if that were to continue, they would pay essentially their impact fee to, to Johnson Utilities. Uh, if they were to come into the Town of Florence at some point, uh, if the utility was provided by the Town of, Town of Florence at some point, they would then, um, pay the, the utility impact fee through one means or another to the Town of, Town of Florence.
Any other question? Hearing none, I'll call for the question, or I need a motion, rather. Make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 1458-14.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion to second to adopt Resolution 1458-14. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the question, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Item D, Resolution Number 1459-14, Discussion Approval Disapproval of a Resolution of the Town of Florence, Pinal County, Arizona, approving the pre-annexation and development agreement with RMG Arizona Properties Holdings, XVI V11 LLC and Arizona Limited Liability Company, and authorizing execution of such pre-annexation development agreement, annexation number 2013-01, Heritage at Magic Ranch Property. Mr. Eckhoff?
And Mayor and Council, uh, this particular property, uh, is, is located, as you can see here, again, um, in, in the area of existing Magic, Magic Ranch, um, uh, development, and I'd be happy to address any questions, um, that you may have on this one.
Anybody with any question for Mark? Hearing none, I need a motion?
Make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 1459-14, entering into a pre-annexation and development agreement with RMG Arizona Property Holdings, XVI ILC, Arizona Limited Liability Company.
Second.
We have a motion to second to adopt Resolution 1459-14. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the question, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Everybody wants to get out of here in a hurry tonight.
Item E, Resolution Number 1460-14, Discussion Approval Disapproval of a Resolution of the Town of Florence, Pinal County, Arizona, approving the pre-annexation development agreement with RMG Residential 2010 LLLP and Arizona Limited Liability Partnership, and authorizing the execution of such pre-annexation development agreement, annexation number 2013-01, Magic Ranch 50 Property. Mr. Eckhoff?
Mayor, Members of the Council, uh, this is a, a smaller linear, linear site that's nudged in there between some of the existing development in Magic Ranch. Same conditions apply to this one, I'd be happy to address any, any questions you may have.
Any member of the council have any question? Hearing none, need a motion?
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 1460-14, again, entering into a pre-annexation and development agreement with RMG Residential 2010 LLLP and Arizona Limited Liability Partnership.
Second. We have a motion to second to adopt Resolution 1460-14. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the question, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Item 17, Department Reports. The manager would like to, um, brief the council.
Uh, Mayor, Council, you do have my, uh, management report for this packet. In that packet, there is a mention that a, uh, potential fire district is being formed in the Santan Valley. The reason I'm calling this to your attention tonight is that, uh, potential fire district is going to take up approximately 36, uh, square miles of our existing, a planning area that was already approved by our citizens. Uh, in addition to note, uh, the Town of Queen Creek City Council has been apprised of the same issue, and they are planning to oppose this as well as it takes up a, a good portion of their planning area. The, uh, Board of Supervisors does have a meeting on the 9th, I believe, Wednesday this week, and I would ask the, to Count Council if they would be considerate of opposing this as well. And if, if so, then, if you can go ahead and authorize me or the mayor to go ahead and issue a memo, preferably under the mayor's name, and address the supervisors.
The, uh, it's, it's been discussed, there is a, a group trying to start a Santan Valley Fire District, another level of taxation, another form of government coming in, but the big increase is, uh, the tax rate to the, to the citizens, the towns concerned, of course, is invading our planning area, which, if they were to do that, and correct me if I'm wrong, my, uh, mm, sorry. Uh, if the, a fire district's created, and we go ahead in, in our planning area and annex that into the town limits, the fire district is still in place even though we have municipal fire department, is that correct?
It would be yes, they would, they would start their own fire department, and they would have their, their own fire department in their district, that's correct.
So, if we annexed it, then you wouldn't have any responsibility, and it would still be under the, their district?
Uh, I believe so, I believe it, it would be, and that'd have to defer to the town manager. I believe if we do annex it, we do take over that, that part of the service, though.
Do you know, Charles?
Mayor, I do not have the specifics on this. Um, I can get you all additional information if you all want to talk about what this would be after a while.
Okay. And again, uh, Queen Creek and Rural Metro are opposing this, as far as you understand.
Yes, sir.
And that meeting is Wednesday at, at, uh, 9 o'clock in the morning, at the Board of Supervisors Hearing Room. Do we need a motion, or we just get a consent from, uh, the council? We will, we, we'll be representing Florence's position on that at that meeting, the manager and I will be there. Okay? Any other questions on Charles' report? Any other questions on Charles' report?
On the manager's report on the, for, uh, some of the departments, I just wanted to, and it looks like we're not going to have a call to the council, so I just want to give kudos to the public work guys for cleaning up after the big storm that we had over this past week.
We have called the council. Well, it's on the written agenda.
It's on item number nineteen.
Any, any other? If any of you haven't been into the painted guitar down there and talked to those folks, they're quite the, they're quite the characters. They're from, they're Anthem residents, brought it in, and doing a lot of repair work on musical instruments, so you ought to stop in and see them. They're really nice people. What's their address? Main Street? Right, right across from the Oak-
Right across from-
Right across from the Oak Room. From the Oak Room, the old bar.
I think it's the Mock Building.
It's the Mock Building, is what it is. You can't miss it. I guarantee, if you drive down Main Street, look to the west, you can't miss it. Any, Tara?
Mr. Acosta, in looking at the, your report, I do have a question. An item that I didn't see on it, and I just wanted to take an opportunity to talk with you, is the medians on your way into the Anthem community, they don't have any rock or any landscaping within them. Whose responsibility is that to have that installed? I had a resident that asked me to bring that forward.
That is Polte's responsibility.
Okay. Would you be the person that would contact and talk to them?
Oh, sure. Yes.
I mean, it's right in front of, you know, the fire department, that whole area as you're going into the community, and just to complete it. And also, Mr. Farina, in your report to council, I didn't notice anything yet about if the bi-yearly statements regarding the assessment fees with the balance, have we been able to fix that knowledge yet?
Councilmember Walter, mayor and rest council, just, that is something that we still are going to be looking at, and we will be able to send out statements to, based up for the assessments and, and the balances.
Okay, we've been going on two years, so let's get it done this year.
Will do.
Any other questions of any of the department heads? This is second call of the public. Any, same ramifications as the first, folks? If I got anything to say? General movement, I call, close the public, call the council, Tommy?
I, I did find my item nineteen. It's here on my, top of my agenda. Uh, once again, kudos for our public works guys for getting out there and cleaning up after the big storm, and also wish a happy birthday to my dad, for any of his students, former students, he's still nineteen, so wish him a happy birthday.
Ribbon?
I just want to say that there was a great Fourth of July celebration, the Freedom Fest. Our law enforcement, fire department, and our Parks and Rec Department did a fantastic job. Only thing missing was Rudy Reese cutting watermelons. I went down there to sit with them, and he wasn't there, so it was a great fireworks presentation, so thank you.
How many melons you cut?
I didn't cut any.
You didn't cut any?
No. I ate like two or three, but-
Melons? Tara?
I don't have anything this evening.
Yeah.
I have nothing.
None? I too want to say congratulations, not only to the police and the police volunteers that were out there working, also to the fire department providing services out there at Fourth of July, it was a very successful event. Heard a lot of good comments. I wasn't there the whole day, just about five hours, but it was really a nice day for it. We lucked out. Mother Nature blessed us with no rain till yesterday.
I feel left out again.
You're not going to be left out. I'm going to save you the last, best for last. I did forget you. Shush. The, the rains we need, we know that. Also want to remind everybody to make sure and know your candidates that are running for council. Gather information if you can. We do have election coming up, the primaries in August. Is that correct, Lisa? Just for the general public, make sure and know your candidates, and make the right votes for the council. Tom?
I just want to thank everybody for the Fourth of July also. It was a great show, a great job, well done by all. Thank you very much.
Any other? Okay. Now we need to, I need a motion to go ahead, go back into executive session. I make a motion to-
To resume executive session?
Second. We have a motion and a second to resume the executive session. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.